Jefferson Elementary School District, it's February 24th, 2016 at 7:03 PM. For those of you who are still standing, there are some seats around if you want to find a place to sit down for a minute. Could we have members present, please?
Shaquille Ali.
Here.
Manufo Liainga Anawai. Marie Brizuela. Clayton Koo.
Here.
Rebecca Douglas.
Here.
And just for the record, Ms. Liainga Anawai has had a family emergency this afternoon and she needed to be with family. And Ms. Brizuela is very ill, so she is not able to join us tonight, but we do have a quorum, so we can continue the meeting.
Okay, and I think I have some, yeah, you guys want to move on in here so that we don't have to be lonely and standoffish. And I believe I have some students from Daniel Webster Elementary who are going to lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have a little thank you certificates for you guys later after we come back to you for some presentation from you in a few minutes. Need to take a moment here to review our board meeting guidelines. Okay, great. Could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm sure that we approved the agenda.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have with us today the many of our winners of our district's Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Fair, the STEM Fair. We have Ms. Jennifer Knopf, STEM Fair facilitator and principal at Daniel Webster, to give us a presentation on the fair and we will acknowledge the winners of the 2016 JESD STEM Fair and participants in the San Mateo County STEM Fair.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Knopf, principal at Daniel Webster. And I had the pleasure of being the district's science fair coordinator this year along with Greg Konz.
Greg Konzer.
Konzer, sorry, he is our admin intern. So, for the last 11 years, Stephen Fredericks and a bunch of his students from Skyline have come to help. One of the students was actually an alumni from the Jefferson Elementary School District, so it was nice to see him giving back to his community. They said that in the last 11 years they've done this, this was the most impressive year. And really to give credit to the teachers for the rigor that's happening in the classroom, it's really showing up in their projects. They used a rubric? They judged them on content and organization, on the quality of the project and the board's presentation. And they spent a lot of time really looking at each project, and every project was judged at least by two different judges. We had over 400 participants this year. The fair was held at Fernando Rivera and Thomas Edison. Thank you Diana Conti and Risa Bell for sharing your sites with us.
And we wouldn't have been able to put this science fair on without many site coordinators that helped to plan and organize all the schools to make sure that these science fair projects could be shown at the science fair. From Ben Franklin, we had Samantha Ty. From Daniel Webster, we had Treadaway. From Fernando Rivera, we had Kate Armstrong. From FDR, we had Nurius Mercado. From Garden Village, we had Shika Shama and Devon Zaretta. Not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. From George Washington, we had Sarah Dowling. From NH Tobias, we had Anusha Takla and Molly McDermott. From MP Brown, we had Gwendolyn Holden. From Susan B. Anthony, we had Miriam Gonzalez and Cheryl Tom. From Thomas Edison, we had Monica Gotay. From TR Palacita, we had Leland Oceans. And from Woodrow Wilson, we had Linda Flynn Mcnesby, who I also leave us here today. And these are our winners this year, some of whom are going to be here to present their findings to you. In 5th grade, we had Raymond Sang as first place winner from George Washington. And in 2nd place, Isabel Lopez and Leah Gomez from Susan B. Anthony. 6th grade, 1st place was awarded to Kristen Huddleston from Ben Franklin. And 2nd place was Justin Brigado, also from Ben Franklin. And in 3rd, from Daniel Webster, we have, and maybe you can help me with this pronunciation, Kenneth Ho and Pio.
Toy.
Toy.
Alright, and...
And then in 7th grade, our 1st place winner was Victor Wu from TRP. And 2nd place was Karen Moran from TRP. And 3rd place was Alan Gonzalez and Aiden Gonzalez, also from TRP. And then finally, in 8th grade, 1st place was Angela Zhang from Ben Franklin. 2nd place was Joshua Minas and Calvin Louis from TRP. And 3rd place was Elena Fernandez, Adrian Hernandez, and Marjorie Roboka from Ben Franklin.
Alright, and we just wanted to thank the board, the district employees, and all the principals and coordinators for their time in making this fair such a success and great learning opportunity for our students. So, we're lucky, we have a few students here tonight who are going to talk about their presentations. Our first will start off with 5th grade. Do you want to come up? This is Raymond Sang from George Washington.
Hello, my name is Raymond Sang. I'm from 5th grade and I go to George Washington Elementary School. My project question was, which fruits have acid or base in them? Oranges, bananas, apples, or strawberries? And my hypothesis was, I think fruits that are sweet would turn blue, which means it has no acid. And fruits that are sour would turn red, which means it has acid. Through my studies, I learned that apples, strawberries, and oranges are acidic. Bananas were the only neutral fruit. Thank you.
Kenneth and Pew Toy from 6th grade from Daniel Webster.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Ho.
Hello, my name is Pew Toy.
We are both in 6th grade and we both go to Daniel Webster Elementary School.
Our project question was, how does the battery energy possession in wheel affect the car? And our hypo- hypothesis was the car with batteries, energy in all wheel will help the car go the fastest.
Through our studies, we learned the car which the batteries, energy in front wheel goes the fastest. Thank you.
Alright, Justin Brigado in 6th grade from Ben Franklin.
Good evening, my name is Justin Brigado and I'm a 6th grader attending Ben Franklin. And my science project question was, do names affect future characteristics? While thinking of my hypothesis, I thought that people with unusual names would have more extroverted typed traits, which in my opinion, were being intuitive, prospecting, turbulent, and use emotional logic to cope with feelings and make decisions. So, of course, that was my hypothesis. My end result contradictingly showed that subjects with common names were more turbulent and prospecting, and being intuitive and observant were the same on each label. But the rest of my predictions are correct.
Thank you. Now we have Kristen Huddleston.
Hello, my name is Kristen Huddleston. I am in 6th grade and I go to Ben Franklin Middle School. My project question was, will the ambient temperature of a solar cell affect its output? For my experiment, I wanted to see if there was an optimal temperature that a solar cell operates best at. To do this, I ran four tests at different temperatures ranging from near freezing to 150 degrees. I predicted that the solar cell that was exposed to the coolest temperature would be most effective, but I found that it was the slowest at producing power. Through my studies, I learned that solar cells operate best when they have an ambient temperature within a range near 66 and 102 degrees. My biggest surprise came during the 150 degree test. The solar cell during this test initially performed well, but was never able to reach its maximum voltage output. Thank you.
And from 5th grade, we have from Susan B. Anthony, Isabella Lopez and Leah Gomez.
Hello, my name is Isabella.
And I'm Leah.
We are in 5th grade.
We go to Susan B. Anthony.
Our project question was, are dogs' mouths cleaner than humans?
And our hypothesis was that we thought a dog's mouth was cleaner and we saw that because most dogs don't eat junk food like humans do.
Through our studies, we learned a dog's mouth is cleaner than a human's because most dogs don't eat junk food. The junk caused chemicals, salts, and sugars to stay in your mouth. Thank you.
Next, we have Victor Wu.
From TRP.
Hello, my name is Victor Wu and I go to TRP, Thomas R. Palacita. I go to 7th grade and my project question was, which propeller accelerated the vehicle that I made the most? My hypothesis was the most twistiest propeller would accelerate the most. But from the results I collected, the flattest propeller with the bigger blades propelled the car the most. Thank you.
And also from TRP, we have Aiden Gonzalez here today.
Hi, my name is Aiden Gonzalez and I go to Thomas R. Palacita. And my experiment was called Fruit Candles. And my hypothesis was that the orange would burn the longest because the like natural, the inside of the orange was like the natural wick. And our result was that the orange burned the longest because the wick soaked up all the oil, which made it burn longer. And I think that's it.
And I think finally, from TRP, excuse me if I don't remember their last names, Calvin and Joshua, are they here?
Good evening, board members. I'm Calvin Louis, an 8th grader at Thomas R. Palacita.
Hello, I am Joshua Minas. I am also in the 8th grade at TRP.
Our project involved us building a catapult. We wanted to know how the different length bungee cords and arms affects the launch distance of the catapult.
Our thoughts were that the more bungee cords and knots in the bungee cord would increase the distance of the object being launched by the catapult.
We found the bungee cords made a difference. In the experiment, the end results were the shorter bungee, 22 inches, and the longer bungee, 34 inches. Inches combined made a difference with both arms. In the end, the different tension and length of the bungies made a difference in the distance of the object. Our longest distance was 626 inches or 52 feet.
Thank you for inviting us here this evening.
Demonstrations will be outside. Are there any other students that arrived after? Alright, so as you can see, the students put, oh, one more?
Hello, my name is Adriana Hernandez. I'm in 8th grade and I go to Ben Franklin School. The project, my question was, do people learn more with technology than with people? My hypothesis was, people learn more with technology. Through my studies, I learned that since now this generation is more attracted to technology, they will pay more attention to it. So, my test subjects showed the same results. So, that makes my hypothesis valid. Thank you.
So, all the students that performed tonight or presented tonight will be moving on to county. And as you can see, they really were able to take what they were interested in, be creative, and apply science. So, we're very proud of them and wish them all the best of luck this weekend at county.
We, as a board and a district, have some certificates and prizes to give to the students, starting with the 5th grade.
First is Raymond Sang. Next is Isabella Lopez. And Leah Gomez.
And Mr. Koo has presentations for 6th graders.
6th graders, first one is Kristen Huddleston. Justin Brigado. And the last, listen, Pew. And Kenneth Ho.
And certificates for 7th graders. Victor Wu. You can see as we move to junior high, they're getting calculators. Karen Moran. You'll see that she gets that. Alan Gonzalez. And Aiden Gonzalez. Would you want to take care of these things?
Angela Sang. Joshua Minas. And Calvin Louis.
I have Elaine Fernandez. Adriana Hernandez. Lastly, but not least, Marjorie Roboka.
I want to extend our congratulations to the... Okay, we'll let them take care of that out there. Extend our congratulations to the students on both the ones who won and all the students who participated for putting a lot of hard work and thought and good, good science into a lot of these presentations that we saw at the STEM Fair. If either of you would like to say something?
Just keep up the great work, keep your enthusiasm and curiosity, don't stop doing science. I actually had a couple of questions. I wanted to know what other fruits were used as candles besides oranges?
Orange, banana, and apple.
Alright, alright. And what did you use with the catapult? What kind of object did you use and where did you, alright, a golf ball? So, how, I mean, where did you launch it?
I mean, you just launched it outside my driveway.
Well, I like the wide range of experiments and projects that were done, you know, physical science. I was surprised to see, I guess there were two like social science experiments, and that's actually my field, so I was very intrigued by that. So, keep up the great work and I'm looking forward to what comes out next year.
I was also at the STEM Fair as well and I was overly impressed by all the projects, even those who participated and those who won. So, I just wanted to say that you guys all did a great and amazing job. And don't stop thinking that you guys could do even better projects next year because I want to see a bigger catapult or... So, great job again.
Alright, let's give our science fair participants another great round of applause. And if people are willing to stick around, we have another presentation from the Tech Buddies at Daniel Webster Elementary School. Tech Buddies is a modern day twist on reading buddies. Daniel Webster's upper grade students are paired with a buddy from the lower grade. Working as buddies, the younger students are being introduced to the Common Core K-12 technology standards. While at the same time, upper grade students are beginning to master through the ability to teach those standards. So, Tech Buddies also develops students' confidence, builds relationships, and provides students with one-on-one support. So, up again tonight?
Okay, so we have some students here actually who are going to present. Come on up. Don't be shy.
We don't bite.
Alright.
What did I say?
Remember your practice?
Oh, you'll be bite, god.
Okay, the video. So, we put together a video that they're going to show, and then if you have any questions at the end, these guys will answer the questions for you, okay? Alright.
Tech Buddies is a lot like reading buddies. Big kid get a younger kid as a partner and they work together once or twice a month. When we work with our tech buddies, we work on different technology standards. Our partner teaches us how to do different things like saving documents, making slideshow, logging into RadKids, and how to look things up on the internet. The best thing about tech buddies is you don't have to raise your hand and wait for the teacher to come over and help you. The tech buddies help you the whole time.
I like tech buddies because they're actually always there for you and even though if it's not like a kid at your age or grade, it's still fun to hang out. It's like, it's like you're the teacher. And you should tell stuff like what your teacher does, like strategies and computer and technology stuff. And you should also, I also like tech buddies because the stuff that I teach them are really cool and I want to like show them everything that I like and what they should like as well. And also all the important stuff.
Tech Buddy John, he's like, he doesn't talk that much, but he's really fun to work with. So, I taught him how to do a slideshow and change the font and titles and also like making new pages.
What I like about tech buddies is that they teach us that you can know how you access them and how you draw it and how you do your password and how to... And how you do your rocket chip.
My tech buddy was helping me do my book and because we were doing the color book. And about the color book, it helped us learn to cut it.
So, unfortunately, the sound didn't come out too well in that speakers. But we're going to, they're going to share something they each experienced with their tech buddies. Who want to start?
My, hello, my name is Austin Mo and I'm in 4th grade. What I really like about tech buddies is like your teacher, but mostly you teach with technology. And you're full grown.
Hello, my name is Aileah and I'm in 4th grade. And the thing that I like about tech buddies is that when they need help, they don't have to wait for a teacher. And that they keep, keep getting better at it.
Hello, my name is Crystal and I'm in 4th grade. The thing I like about tech buddies is that they can have like an experience of being the teacher. And if there's like more kids than teacher, the teacher might struggle if like someone's having like a hard time and another one does, then another and another and another.
That's true.
Some questions for our tech buddies?
I don't have any questions right now, but I just want to thank Principal Knopf once again for putting our students forward. That's the best way to showcase what we're doing as a district is have the students actually talking. And I really like the fact that the students are engaging in peer education. And like they said, it helps the teacher, it helps the students because they get help a little quicker, but obviously it helps the teacher as well. So, yeah, great job.
Great job as well. I just had a question. How often do the tech buddies like help out the younger kids?
They meet about once or twice a month. And the nice thing is, all the standards are the same for elementary school, but the lower grade is introductory and then upper grade is mastery, so you're able to hit both standards at the same time, which is nice.
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, but I do want to congratulate you on a great program for the kids and thank you kids and congratulate you for coming and having the courage to speak. I know it's not always easy and comfortable. I know it's not always easy and comfortable, but that's another great opportunity and skill to develop. So we do have some certificates to thank you guys and the other students from Daniel Webster who helped lead the pledge. One or another, if you go ahead and start, yeah.
I deserve to be called.
Did you want to have two? Oh, that's because of them. Crystal Damesa? Well spoken. Austin Mo? And Alia Diomico? And I did have one question because I know we had a bunch of you who came and three of you spoke and some of you led the flag, but are you all Tech Buddies, the ones who didn't speak as well?
The whole school participates.
The whole school, okay. And did, did, were you the students who did, made the video? Some of them anyway?
Yeah, they participated in it, the kids that made it and some of the upper grade students. But basically the upper grade are paired with kinder each grade has a partner that they meet with, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, round of applause for our great Tech Buddy program. At this point, I know that many of you want to get home to get those kids to bed, but I'm going to suggest that we stick around for our comments from board members and so forth and we'll take a little break after those comments and announcements to give you a chance to go home. So do I have no speaker card or do we have a speaker card? Elaine Francisco and Melinda Dart?
I don't see Melinda. Didn't even see her.
Good evening. Hi, Melinda Dart, AFT 3267, and Elaine Francisco, also from AFT 3267. I wanted to compliment the students on their wonderful creativity, really creative science projects. I also wanted to thank the parents and the teachers who helped with those projects. I've been through a lot of science projects in my life as both a parent and a teacher and I know that, how important that can be and, and sometimes you're rushing around at the last minute getting that stuff together, so I remember it well. And if you're, if you're lucky, you have parents at home that can, can help you with your project, but when you can't, and not everybody can because of the demands of, of work and things like that, we know that our teachers are always there for students who want to do projects and, and they manage. I have fond memories of 32 kids all telling me at once that they needed different things for their project. And I know what that's like and I would really like to give a hand to the teachers and the parents who helped with that. And I do want to announce that we have two upcoming events and one, I know a lot of you have heard about them, but I want to announce them in this nice full room. We have a community school event to learn about community schools, what they are, how they can help us, how they could be great in Daly City, and that is at the Colma Community Center tomorrow from four to six PM. We will have food served there and it's kind of a informational session to find out if we can, we already have a lot of community type activities going on in our schools in Daly City, but to find out how we can strengthen that and bring in more partners from the community to help us in our schools and, and offer even more enrichment and things like that in our schools. So we hope that anyone who wishes can join us from four to six tomorrow at the Colma Community Center. And in March, we have, do you want to talk about this?
So we have, March, on March 19th, we have a conference. It is a pre-K 14 conference. This conference is in collaboration with the high school district, the community college, and our district, and we would like to invite all parents and teachers to attend.
And principals?
And principals and...
And administrators. And board members.
And the tentative topics include behavior management at school, at home. We have understanding Common Core standards. We have school choice and enrollment in Jefferson Union High School. We have also restorative justice and behavior, other behavior management techniques for high school population. We also have college support services for student success and other key community issues like the housing crisis of San Mateo. So please join us. We have free childcare, we have breakfast, we have bag lunches, we have tons of giveaways. We have 1,200 brand new books for students, we have backpacks, t-shirts, and goodies for you. We also have raffle drawings and great keynote speakers. We also have our San Mateo County Superintendent Anne Campbell joining us to talk about the skilled workforce or the teaching workforce of San Mateo County. So please join us and I have these registration forms for you. Thank you.
And you can pick one up from us during the break. Yes, thank you.
So much. Great events to be aware of and take, take part in. Have administrator comments?
Yeah, I'd like to comment. First off, I could seriously use a Tech Buddy myself. Like all the time. But also, I can't stress enough, on June 7th, we'll have a primary election and there are some forms to fill out if you're not registered to vote or if you know somebody who's 18 or older, will be 18 or older, that is not registered to vote. I can't stress it enough. I was recently in Myanmar and that country has fought and demonstrated for the right to vote after many years of a dictatorship. And our country counts on all of our, all of us voting and all of us encouraging other people to vote who can. So June 7th is not that far away, it's only three months away, and so there are some forms in back if you'd like to take one for somebody. Thank you.
I would also like to congratulate all of the Science Fair winners from our Science Fair and good luck at the Science Fair or STEM Fair at the county office. And then also to congratulate the students from Daniel Webster for their Tech Buddies program. I think it's a great program, especially with all the technology that we're implementing and hopefully more to come. I just wanted to announce there's, we had some great news that came to us. We're part of the Big Lift, which is a preschool to third grade alignment. And so we have a grant and part of that grant, they added additional funds to have a summer learning program for free for entering kinder and entering first graders in our district. And it's a five-week program. We're still working out the details, but we just wanted to let folks know if you have an entering kinder, entering first, be on the lookout for more information. It's really exciting news and it's going to be a great program. That's it.
I will be attending the annual California School Personnel Commission Association Conference in Anaheim tomorrow with Personnel Commission members Dennis Shreve and Sonia Reyes. I'll be working with our other merit system colleagues from South San Francisco Unified School District and then from the San Mateo County Office of Ed, really focusing on that, our recruitment and retain, retention of highly qualified and dedicated classified personnel to our district. So looking forward to that.
All right, thank you. Board members, acknowledgements and commendations?
Yes, I'd like to commend all the students that had their artwork displayed at Skyline College. There was The Scream, The Art of Local Teens. It was at the Skyline College Art Gallery and the participating schools were Jefferson High School, Ben Franklin Intermediate, Fernando Rivera Middle School, Oceana High School, Terra Nova High School, Thornton High School, and Westmore High School. And I was able to attend and look at all the great artwork that the students had. While I'm mentioning that, we have also the president of the high school district here, Ms. Rosie Tahada. She was there as well and I believe Clayton was there. We had a good time and just, I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that because we're talking about science and technology tonight, but as Dr. Douglas has mentioned several times, we should be talking about STEAM, which is science, technology, engineering, art, and math. So just my commendations to those students and also to Mr. Vidalas and the whole district for being a part of the Big Lift. And that's really great news to find out about that free summer learning program. So keep up the great work.
So as Board Member Ali said, I was at the, the art gallery at Skyline College and all the artwork was pretty amazing for especially middle schoolers as well as high schoolers. I know that it's still going on, I think until... March 11th. At Skyline College at their art gallery, things open normal hours like nine to five, ten to five. So I would recommend everybody who can just stop by and take a look at all the art pieces. It's pretty impressive. Yeah.
And I just want to again extend commendations to all the students for, in the art projects, the science projects, the science math engineering projects, and the Tech Buddies. And as Ms. Dart said, that's a huge congratulations and thank you to the parents and teachers who also make that happen and who make all sorts of things throughout our district happen every day. So want to thank all those people on that score. Mr. Vidalas, do we have any correspondence or comments?
Yes, a couple. So I did receive a letter from the county office of education who reviewed our first interim budget report and as expected, they concur with our finding and your finding that the district does have positive certification, meaning that we can meet our obligations this year and in the two outgoing years with the information we have about future school budgets and funding. They also wanted to commend our board for maintaining a reserve above the minimum of the state's required requirement, suggesting that it puts us in a good place to respond to any misfortune that may happen with school funding in the coming years. That's one thing. The second thing is many of our community, in our community have become aware, we sent out an email notification to our families last week and a paper notification this week that the California Department of Education is under a court order to release student records with personally identifiable information, which include things like name, address, other details relating to a student as part of a lawsuit. And we need to let parents know they have the option to request to be removed from that list. The request doesn't guarantee that they would, but, because a judge can decide to remove them or not, so, but at least there's, it's a good chance that you, you may be able to be removed from that list. And there's so much right now about misuse of private information that many people are wary of that kind of information getting out, although the parties in the lawsuit did agree that they would not misuse, disclose, or lose and have the information. We just, for, you know, you just never know what happens with information. So that is available for parents. More information is on our website and a link to the form to fill out, to opt out is there as well. Last meeting, I talked about, that I was planning on attending and I did attend the No One Eats Alone event at Fernando Rivera. And we did have Channel 7, ABC 7 News, Leann Melendez come and a video and film and report on that event. The link to that will likely be on our district Facebook page in the next couple of days. It's in the queue and it will come up soon, but if you can't wait and you really want to see it, you go to abc7news.com and you just search for No One Eats Alone and you can find the little clip of the, little five-minute clip showing the students and having students share their responses to the event. It was really nice.
Thank you, Mr. Vidalas. At this point, we'll take a brief recess so that students who need to go home and finish their homework and get to bed can do so. Just, if the board members will preferably not go far away so we can get back to our agenda shortly. You're perfectly welcome to stay for the entire meeting, don't get me wrong. But as a general rule, I find that the children would like to go, get home about this point.
He was too embarrassed to come up. A blue folder. He was security there, he would not come up.
Thanks, everyone. If I could, if I could pull our meeting back to order. This brings us to the general function section of our agenda. Could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Okay, these are going to get all certed before me, so I'm going to make sure I don't skip anything.
Item C.
Item C, Major High Citizens Bond Oversight Committee report to the board. Members of the Major High Citizens Bond Oversight Committee will present their annual report to the board. will present their annual report to the board. Yeah, it is. Who is presenting? Is that Ms. Tejada?
Paging Ms. Tejada. Ms. Tejada.
It's like herding cats.
We can move on to item D and come back to C.
There she is. No. Yes, there she comes. Okay. Thank you. So, Ms. Tejada, if you're ready to give us the presentation on the Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee for Measure I?
I'm sorry, it's old-home week out there. Good evening, President Douglas, members of the board, and administration. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Vidalas. It's my pleasure to present the report from the Citizens Oversight Committee. As required by the statutes and bylaws of the Measure I Bond Election, the Citizens Oversight Committee is pleased to provide our annual report to the Board of Trustees of the Jefferson Elementary School District. Members of the committee are Tony Bayudan, Vaughn Jones, Amy Marr, Thomas A. Norris, June Newhouse, Kathy Pentazzi, Lillian Peña, Linda Telles, Rosie Tejada, and Adrienne Zanini. On March 16, 2015, June 10, 2015, and September 9, 2015, the committee met to review current expenditures and discuss the progress of the district-wide wireless upgrade project as well as the Thomas R. Policita School Renovation Project, Phases I and II. September 9, 2015, was Amy Marr's last committee meeting as she advised she was no longer a parent of the district. On November 4, 2015, the committee met to review current expenditures and discuss the progress of the Thomas R. Policita School Renovation Project, Phases I and II-A, the District-Wide Wireless Upgrade Project, and the District Office Technology Facilities Improvement Project. This was Lillian Peña's first committee meeting after being appointed by the JESD Board on September 9, 2015, as a parent of the district committee member. On January 20, 2016, the committee met to review current expenditures and discuss the progress of the Thomas R. Policita School Renovation Project, Phases I, II-A, and II-B, District Office Modernization Project, and District Office Technology Facility Improvement Project. The committee was informed about the issuance of the Series C Measure I Bond Issue of $17.5 million, which will support current and future bond projects. Additionally, the committee reviewed the annual independent financial and performance audit reports provided by Vavrenec, Trine Day &amp; Company, LLP. Based on our review and observations, the Citizens Oversight Committee finds that the district is in compliance with the requirements of Article 13A, Section 1B.3 of the California Constitution, and that funds are being used for the purposes specified in the ballot language. The committee is pleased with the district's performance on the modernization bond program to date and looks forward to the successful completion of the 2016 projects. Respectfully submitted, Rosie Tejada, Chairman.
Thank you. And I want to note and thank the members of the committee are, as it says, a Citizens Oversight Committee. They do this as a voluntary service to our district, help us fulfill the law that requires such a committee for monitoring how we spend bond revenues. So, want to give them thanks and recognition for their service to the district.
Just another thanks. You know, Ms. Tejada also helped on the campaign, you know, before we got the bond. So, and just once again, to all the parents and community members that helped out on the bond campaign as well.
I also want to thank everybody on the committee for voluntary time to make sure that we're spending money properly and wisely.
Yeah, likewise, I'd like to thank the members of the Citizen Oversight Committee. The members who serve are of high standing in our community, and I think their service and their review helps maintain public confidence in our district and how we're utilizing Measure I funds. So, I want to thank them for their continued service to the community and also in how they serve our district and the taxpayers in our district.
If I may thank them as well. And the reason for this is because I go to these meetings, and I want everybody to show up so that we can have... They can have a quorum, and they can move forward. And they do, and they take it seriously. And I've seen it where things aren't taken seriously. And it's wonderful to see that they really do want to serve the community, and they are interested in what's going on in the district.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Tejada. Brings us to item D. The 2016 CSBA Delegate Assembly Election. This is for discussion and/or action. The board will select up to three candidates to be considered as delegates to the CSBA Delegate Assembly.
Yeah, you can select up to three. We do have three candidates who are... That's put in their paperwork to be considered. The board has the option to vote up to three and/or write in a candidate. So, you can discuss that and determine how you want to move forward.
So, either of you have any thought? I don't know if this is something that we should or what our schedule is on that, if we should consider allowing it to ride over to another meeting for...
I believe we have to turn it in March 15. We do have one more meeting on March 9. If you wanted to...
All right, we table this until the next board meeting.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I think that's only polite, although there are three returning candidates, so I doubt if there will be a lot of controversy. But, okay, item E. CAVA at San Mateo Charter Reauthorization. The administration recommends approval of the CAVA California Virtual Academy at San Mateo's petition for charter reauthorization from the JESD.
Yes, and so, as you know, we've held an information session to the board on the CAVA at San Mateo Charter School. We held a public hearing at our previous meeting to hear any public comments on their petition for reauthorization. I have reviewed their petition for reauthorization with the guidance of our board policy on charter school reauthorization. And I can confidently say that the petition describes a reasonably sound educational program with appropriate metrics to measure progress along the way. Given their history and their past performance, I have no evidence to believe that they will not be able to carry out their program as is described in their petition. They do have documented assurances of Education Code 4765 Subsection D and 47605 Subsection B as required by the law. They do meet at least one of the criteria of academic performance that is described in our board policy and in Education Code. This is not part of the charter reauthorization, but they have cooperated with our district. They've offered to supply both me and the board with documentation, providing evidence of their compliant practices in business and operations as response to some concerns raised by members of their school community. But they maintain positive audit reports from their auditor, which regularly reviews their businesses, operations, and attendance procedures. And we've not requested to see any of that. That was sufficient for us, at least for me. So, I do recommend that we reauthorize the California Virtual Academy at San Mateo for another five years.
Is there any discussion? Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the petition for charter reauthorization for CAVA at San Mateo Charter.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Abson, the executive director, is here. Do you want to say any words to our board, even though they've already voted?
It's a little easier.
Yeah, exactly.
Just to continue, I've had the pleasure of working with this district since the school came to you. And it's always been a pleasure. And I know we've had a couple of superintendents that we worked with, but... And even with some of the questions that have come about, especially in this last couple of years, it's been unique in the history of the school. And I just appreciate your support and your openness with questions and things when you do have a concern that they come forth. And it always seems to come without prejudice and just a sincere wanting to understand really what's going on and allowing our school to actually present evidence to any allegations that have come about. So, I just appreciate the support. And I know the faculty and the families are going to be very excited when I send the email out tonight to say, "Guess that, guys, we're good." So, thank you so much, and I look forward to the next five years.
You're welcome. Thanks. I'm gonna move to table these.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the next two items. Let's take them one at a time. The item F, the Governance Handbook Updates. I am going to suggest that we table that until we have a...
Yeah, I don't disagree. I think we should to actually vote. But as I reviewed it, I thought maybe we could at least... I had some changes that I thought might be appropriate, that we could at least read into the record and present it modified for the next meeting. So, essentially, the Governance Handbook is the same as we've always had. There's some names that were changed, dates that were changed, et cetera. You get down to page 19, there is a new protocol in there. The topic is a unified board. And so, I just wanted to do some language tweaking just to reflect the language that we use in our district. So, at the bottom of page 19, I think the last sentence there says, "Only the chair will respond to public comment." I think for the language that we use in our district, that should be replaced with, "Only the president will respond." So, that's something that I didn't catch earlier. At the beginning, on the top of the next page, page 20, the first sentence, "Board members do not have different values." I think it would be nice to delete that because I do think sometimes people have different values. The next sentence could maybe read something like, "Board members may have different value priorities," just stating that that may be true. And then, in the next paragraph in the middle, it says... The way it reads, it says, "This commitment to either support or refrain from undermining majority decisions does not preclude the member from asking for consideration," blah, blah, blah. I think it might read better if we say something like, "This commitment to support or refrain..." I don't think we need the "either." "This commitment to support or refrain from undermining majority..." This... Wait. "Board members commit to..." That's what I meant. "Board members commit to support or refrain from undermining majority decisions." Period. And then start the next one saying, "This commitment does not preclude the member from asking," and then continuing forward. I think it might just read clearer with the shorter sentence and making it...
That's a valid point. I'd be willing to hit those changes.
All right, so I will include it with a strikeout in the next reading so that it's evident that was made from the recommendation from Steve Land. We never looked at this with him as we have in the past. So, this is our time to discuss and consider the different changes. So, those will be my additions to any changes on this document.
Is there any other thought or comment on those changes from board members?
No.
Yeah, I agree with those. I was also taken aback at the statement that board members do not have different values. Like, well, how does he know for one thing? And that's actually not the point. The point is that whatever our different values and whatever our priorities might sometimes be, we work together as a board for the best results for our students. So, yeah. So, I think we can... Now, we can take a motion to table... Or, actually, I guess if we just don't vote, we've done what we need to do on that, right?
Yeah, we cannot vote, but it's just nicer to say "tabled." Because otherwise, it looks like you didn't like it at all.
Very well. I will make the motion that we table this for further discussion and a vote at our next meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with the board subcommittees, is there anything on that that you would like to bring up now?
No, unless there are specific questions. And I think I can wait for the full board or a large percentage of the board to be present so that we can discuss that. So, no urgency.
I'd like to move that we table this to the next board meeting.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna say, I even recommend that. Okay, Curriculum and Instruction, item C. Educator Effectiveness Funds Expenditure Proposal. The Jefferson Elementary School District received the Educator Effectiveness Funds from the California Department of Education to be used for the purposes of supporting professional development for certified teachers, administrators, and paraprofessional educators. The administration approves... Recommends approval of the proposed expenditures for the 2016-17 and 2017-18 school years. A public hearing on the expenditure proposal was held on February 10, 2016. Is there any discussion or comment on that? Any questions for the cabinet members about that?
Nope.
So, if you are satisfied, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that we accept or approve the proposed expenditures of the Educator Effectiveness Funds for 2016 to 17 and 2017 to 18 school years.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving right along. Our LCAP Progress Update Information. Administration will share updates on the development of the 2016-17 Local Control Accountability Plan, LCAP, which includes stakeholder input dates and timetable for the 2015-16 school year. And it looks like that's from Ms. McCoolick.
Yes. Good evening. So, a lot of this will be review for you just to kind of keep you apprised of what has happened and what is going to happen, and just update you on the most recent happenings. Remind you that the LCAP is an accountability plan. We are required to disclose publicly how these local control funding formula funds are spent. The funds, the LCAP, has to have these eight priority areas included, which are basically conditions of learning, pupil achievement, as well as community engagement. Our district goals include all of these eight priority areas. We have student learning, professional learning for staff, positive school environment, community engagement, and all of that, we need to be fiscally prudent. So, for the LCAP process, hopefully, this looks familiar to you. In January and February, we held meetings with our stakeholders. And stakeholders, of course, are parents, teachers, students, all staff, basically, and the community to provide input on what our 2016-17 LCAP should look like. So, basically, we had these meetings saying, "Let's look at some metrics. Let's look at some of the data. Let's compare it to our goals. Look at the actions. What actions and services?" Basically, an open-ended question for each goal. What actions and services should we keep? Should we add, increase? And then, what we're doing now is we have taken all that information, and we have consolidated the common ideas. And we're going to go back to stakeholders and say, "Okay." With, you know, knowing that we don't have... You know, we can't do everything. What is... How can you prioritize what you want us to look at for the 16-17 LCAP? And then, in April, we'll have a draft presented to stakeholders and the board. And then, in May, we'll have a final draft. So, we'll have several versions. And then, in June, we'll come to the board and have a hearing, and then, final approval, hopefully, with the governing board. Along the way, we're checking with the county. The county office is the approval after the board approves. And so, the county office is actually giving us a lot of technical assistance along the way so that we can be pretty confident by the time we get to June that they're going to approve it. And so, we've been having meetings. And they're actually, because this is still so new, they're getting more familiar and getting really helpful in this process. So, these are all the meetings. You've seen this before. Some of the dates have been updated. And so, you know, a lot of board meeting dates, just all the different stakeholder meeting dates. And so, that's just more specifics on that last slide. So, as I mentioned with the four goals, this was a highlight document. We had lots of backup documentation as well. But this is the one that most people access with the goals, the major actions, and then the metrics. And then, we tried to make it as clear as possible for all stakeholders because a lot of stakeholders are not in the education system and don't know all the jargon that we use. So, we tried to be really clear. And so... And so in January, so just to kinda recap what we did, January, February, we reviewed those goals, metrics, and actions. And looked at the data and say, what does it tell us? And then to say, okay, now let's identify what actions and services do we need to add, change, or remove. And we gathered this information through this Google form, so this is just a snapshot or a sample of what it looked like. We actually had it translated, so it was a little lengthier. But by the middle of February, we asked folks to identify who they were, what school or site that they were affiliated with, and then what their role was in the community. And then it was open-ended, based on the data, for each goal, tell us what actions and services we need to look at. So this was all gathered, it was all reviewed, lots of ideas, lots of different suggestions, and some suggestions were not necessarily LCAP-related, but they were good suggestions to note that, oh, that's a great idea to think about. A lot of times, people said, oh, not so many release days for subs. So that's something we wouldn't put in the LCAP necessarily, but a good note to us that, okay, we need to keep that in mind. So you might not see a lot, a lot of the suggestions in the LCAP, but it is something that we're gonna pay attention to as we move forward. So these are the results. We had six hundred fifty-seven responses. In every goal, there were four goals, and every person responded to each goal. So I read six hundred fifty responses times four. So, and then you can just see the breakout of which stakeholder group was represented. So it was mainly certificated staff and students and parents. And then we also had our classified staff, and then a few community members, and then classified management and certificated management. Some of them actually identified themselves as the top two as well, so that might have been included. So, these are some of the major, most common improvement, expansion of actions and services that stakeholders suggested. I have to say, overall, it was mainly about increasing technology access. Technology access for students, and then technology professional development for staff. That was pretty overwhelming, that, that was the number-one thing that we saw. But then there's a lot of other things that had a lot of interest, English learners, newcomers, more support. Lot of mentions about support in special education in the general education environment. So really, supporting students that are in the general education setting, but have, you know, resource specialists or some sort of special, they have an IEP, but they're mainly in the general education environment, so how do we support those students? And so that was a lot of, I feel like I need to back away from this. So there was a lot of comments about increasing support for students and then as well as staff. Having language courses, you know, like French, Spanish, you know, those kinds of offerings, avoiding split classes. So there were lots of mentions also about science, next-generation science standards are the new science standards that have come out. So there's a little bit of excitement around that. And then art, music, and then summer learning, which we already got a jumpstart on with this big lift, and then adding sports program. Lot of school sites, a lot of mentions were for specific school site actions, and so I separated those. And these were also given directly to the school site, 'cause I was able to identify, you know, it was a Google form, it was an Excel spreadsheet. So I was able to sort by school site and give it back to the school and say, here's what people said, you can see. So there were a lot of mentions for site-specific areas, and remember, we are giving school sites funds so that they can make these decisions with their single plan. So library books, tutoring, intervention support, et cetera. For the second goal, which is the professional learning goal, like I said, technology was a big interest, a big need. And then also professional learning that we already had started, so it was mentioned again, so writing workshop. Our tiered support, which is supporting students that are struggling. It's a three-tiered system, so response intervention, so academic as well as behavioral. And then some more support for English learner, English language development for English learners and coaching. And then, like I was saying, special education-specific training, as well as special education and general education collaboration. And then CPR first aid was mentioned, common core training for certificated as well as classified staff, and then next-generation science. And then there was a lot of mentions about observing colleagues, and so that's something that the sites can think about. But that was just something to highlight as well. For the school environment, some district-level actions, counseling was another big area, counseling mental health support, just supporting students in that area. And then there was quite a few mentions about nursing support, increasing maybe the gaze. And then also, school sites, a lot of considerations for what kinds of positive behavior intervention support, PBIS support at sites. Lot of supervision comments, and then increasing enrichment activities, sports activities at the school site level. And then there are a lot of mentions about, you know, something's broken or something, you know, that they just need to let their principal know about, but they mentioned it. So very site-specific facilities updates. And like I said, all school sites got all this information, so they can address them immediately if needed. And then the last piece is the community engagement, and so continuing funding district and school family events. And then recruiting, there are a lot of mentions about a parent liaison and having a district one oversee to support, like someone that they can go to, that there would be a parent or a PTA member, someone at a school site that could say, who can I go to to help us engage parents? So that was mentioned quite a bit, actually. And then as well as, there are a lot of comments about our websites and improving them, as well as an online parent portal, which we are actually working on, getting that up to, up and running. We just wanna make sure it's good before we open it up. We're a little delayed on that, because we want it to be a successful rollout.
What would mean the purpose or function of that?
The online parent portal? So a parent can go in and see a student's attendance, a student's grades, and then any kind of news or notes or messages from the school site. A lot of school districts actually use these portals where they can go in and just see, it's, it's, I see it more at the middle schools, where they have different grades and different classes, but, you know, there's ways that you can go in and see how your child is doing. And so we're, we're, that's in progress right now.
There are some teachers individually that have these portals, right?
They have their own system, and so this would be associated with our student information system synergy. Because there is a parent portal piece that's free, that's, well, it's not free, we pay for the student information system, it comes with it. And then the last piece is just improving communication with families. There were some comments about having email, having the newsletters from the school sites emailed to staffs, to parents, and then having them translated in languages as well. So in March, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna have folks, remember to review the metrics, 'cause we always wanna go back to the goals and metrics and data. And then review the proposed actions from the stakeholders, so all the ones you see, we're gonna have another Google form. And then we're gonna ask folks to prioritize, pick your top, you know, three for the district and top three for your school site, so then we can separate it out. So we, we're working on that forum. So that'll be available soon, probably close to early to mid-March. And because of spring break, we're gonna have a little delay in between, but we'll have the submission date by April eleventh. So that at a, the last board meeting in April, I can come to you with some recommendations and some suggestions with the LCAP. Oh, oh, and that, the, this is just something for folks to know when this is shared out, that this is, you're gonna be, the governing board will review and approve the final LCAP actions and services. All of this is available, all this information is available on our district website. It's the very first thing you see, it says, visit our LCAP webpage. And then it's actually been updated since I've taken the screenshot, but there's information about what is the LCAP, all those highlights that you saw on that earlier slide that's colorful, as well as very detailed going into each goal, and then all of the dates for the meetings. The input, input form link will be up there, as well as results from our family survey, and then just the metrics. So there's lots of information at this website, so if anyone has more information, wants to go into more detail, they can visit our website. So if there's any questions, but to let people know, they can check out our webpage, and then the last year's LCAP is posted. It's required by law to be posted on the front page of our website, which it is. Any questions?
I don't have any.
I had a question. So I remember when you, I went to the last PIAE meeting, and you guys were talking about the form. Did you have any issues trying to get the word out about getting people to fill out the form, or did it work?
It was, it was, we had school sites share it with families, and so each school site approached it differently. Some had a parent meeting where they had Chromebooks set up and talked about it, some where they had their staff actually kinda go through what their recommendations were, so that they could show, share with the parents, this is what we're recommending as a staff, what do you think? And so the parents had somewhere to start. Lot of reflection on what would be a better process for next year. I don't think I'll do it the same way next year. But we'll, we got a lot of feedback, and I'm, I'm interested in more feedback. And I'm gonna ask, actually, PIAE, when we meet in two weeks, I believe, for their feedback as well on it. So, yeah, I, I don't necessarily know how it went at every site, but I know sites did it differently, and I'd love for feedback.
Well, I did kinda have a question now that that was asked, too. Have you thought about using, there's like a way you can have clickers, and then people can give live responses, and you can show them.
Oh, like poll everywhere?
Yes, that, is that one of the ideas, or?
Uh, no, it wasn't. But I'm, I'm already thinking about it. I don't know how it would work having, because you can only open it for so long, and if we have it at different sites on different days, but I'll look into it. It's an idea.
I have no questions. I just wanna thank you for, as always, immense amount of work that goes into this. Looks like we're making progress in the right direction.
Thank you.
Business and financial procedures, the document, item B, document scanning services contract amendment. Administration recommends the board approve an additional one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to complete the project initially authorized on March twenty-fifth, 2015. The increase in authorization is needed to accommodate the large volume and complexity of student files needing to be scanned, including the indexing capabilities to maximize usability of those files for the district. Complete the document scanning for current employees and prepare all files for use in the Laserfish system. The contractor agrees to complete all the work necessary and described in scope for amount not to exceed an additional one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Just, uh, did we already kind of know that we might need to do it in two phases? It seems like we discussed that, or that it might take?
Yeah, we anticipated it would be like a three-phase for each, each, each section. The, the issue that came up here, so you remember when we discussed our student files? And we described the room, it's in, in our warehouse, and it's shelves five or six high, boxes two or three deep. And so the issue that arose was that they were not able to look at all of the boxes and give us an accurate estimate of the number of files prior to coming to the board. So as the boxes were opened, it became clear that they're much more densely packed than a normal box, and many of those records were single-page records, like a report card for every student. Or in the attendance, used to be taken in previous generations, one card per student for the attendance for the year. So we had a lot more documents than we thought, and so we also determined that if we're gonna scan them, we would also like to be able to search them by school, by year, by teacher, by student, versus just, they, one suggestion was, we can just have it school and year. But then that would be like looking for a needle in the haystack electronically, to find the right one that we needed. So that's the, the major cost is, is in getting that kind of capability.
And I just wanted to ask for clarification, how often we get those requests?
Yes. So every time, certainly anytime immigration laws are talked about as potentials or as reversals. We do, there are several regulations in place now that allow people to request permanent residency if they had been in school as of a certain date. So we do get requests, there are so often seventies, eighties, and nineties, you know, for those purposes. Prior to the seventies, we get requests from the courts. So they wanna determine that somebody lived in Daly City, you know, parents and that kinda stuff. So we get subpoenaed for those kinds of records, maybe once a year. But the, the eighties, nineties, and forward, those we get, as they, they come in waves. So whenever it's in the news, we can have as many as five to ten in a week, and other times, you know, maybe just two a month.
Is our technology director involved in this at all?
Um, they are, and making sure that they're imported back into our system, into our servers, and also assisting staff with the case, you know, the knowledge and how to access them and how to do the search.
And we have room left.
I know, it's necessary.
Warehouse that we.
We freed up about two and a half rooms, maybe three rooms, by not having the physical storage.
Which the files we had to keep permanently, anyway.
Right.
Does anybody wanna make a motion on this?
I move that we approve the additional one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for the document scanning services contract amendment.
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I do need to underscore, the contractor agreed to complete it for one eighty-five, now that they've looked at all of the stuff, and they were able to give us a more accurate estimate. We said, you are not gonna come back and ask for more?
Yeah, I noticed that.
We told them they cannot. This is, this is, this is it. They may, we may come back with a new project, but this, for this project, this is done.
Say, if it breaks the bank, it's gonna break their bank, not ours this time. Okay. Hey, that brings us down to section thirteen, board policies and ARs.
So, this is the one for how items get onto the agenda. So as we had the request made a couple of weeks ago by a, a member of the public to put an item onto our agenda, it became clear to me and to Dr. Douglas that our board policy, our, did not reflect the protocol that we have for how this happens. So we had a board protocol that's in the Governance Handbook, but the board policy did not reflect that. And so we just, I consulted with county council and said, which things can we change? Do we have the option to do it this way? County council agreed that we, we do have the option to do that, and so the changes that are made there are just to more accurately, accurately reflect what happens. The way that they were written before, it sounded like the member of the public was the one that determined when an item was to be heard. When in reality, our practice has always been that the board president and superintendent discuss when the most appropriate time would be. And I changed when an item is time-sensitive, like this needs to be heard, that we get it at least fourteen days before. The policy stated seven days, but usually the board president and I meet to discuss the agenda anywhere from eight to ten days before a board meeting. So we just clarified the policy to reflect our practice.
Is there any discussion or question about the changes made in that policy?
Well, I support it. I mean, this, it was a little awkward at that last meeting to deal with that item that no one supported.
Yeah, we were, we found ourselves obligated to put it on our agenda because of the way our policies were. Even though none of us wanted. Yeah. So this is the first reading, we can accept it, for the first reading at this meeting, it will return at our next meeting for a second reading, so there's a motion.
So, so what, what are we motioning on?
If you wanna make a motion to accept the board policy as, as presented here for the first reading.
Or in, in the simple, Paula, you can also accept it for the second reading at one time as well.
Yeah, I was not with, I thought we might let it come back since many of us aren't here, just to see if anybody has any.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to, to accept the first reading of the update to BB ninety-three-two-two for agenda and meeting materials as stated.
I second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
This brings us to the board member comments, reports, and reflections on board, board meeting guidelines.
Yeah, I reflected on, we will work toward the future, learning from the past, and we're definitely working towards the future. We just saw that we will have the meeting in March for the LCAP, and keep moving forward. Yeah, that's it, no other comments. Yeah, that's it, no other comments.
I also have the same one. We'll work toward the future, learning from the past. We talked about the STEM fair, we talked about Tech Buddies, we talked about the art, art show. We also talked about LCAP, so I felt all that kind of follow-up on the school.
That's great. I, I reflected on that we'll bring our best selves to the meetings, being fully present, ready to contribute because anytime I come to a, to a meeting really tired, I reflect on that one. And then I look out at those kids and it actually really helps me to have the energy to go through with it. And it worked to get, once again, I am, am still upright. So I think we did, did a great job tonight. I have no requests from anyone wishing to address the board on our closed session items. So we will end right now in memory and return to closed session in a few minutes. So I want to end our meeting with a moment of silence in memory of Bella Walter, mother of Petra Walter, instructional assistant and special ed at Marjorie H. Tobias Elementary School. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Okay. And we will recess and reconvene to closed session in about five minutes.